Yeah.
Yeah, where is that?
Thank you, everyone, for coming. We're going to call this meeting to order. And I would ask the clerk for to call.
Thank you, councillor Clark. Councillor Hyatt.
President.
Councillor O'Hara. Councillor Patel.
President.
Councillor Welsh. Debbie Mayor Field.
President.
Mayor Loosely. We have quorum.
Believe it or not. You do the disclaimer.
I will do the acknowledges. So we acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, the Ottawa and the Potawatomi peoples, referred to collectively as the Inishna Bag. The town of Petrolia is located on the lands associated with the Huron Track Treaty, number 29 of 1827. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work and play, and we are committed to working respectfully with the land and the indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you. Moving on to number five. Declaration of pecuniary interests. If you have one, you can declare it now or at the time. Seeing none, we'll move on to number six, the adoption of the agenda. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Hyatt. Any questions? All those in favor? That passes. Moving on to seven, consideration of minutes from previous meeting, we have two sets. We can do them together or separate. Councillor Clark, councillor Hyatt, it's gonna be familiar, I'm gonna say that a lot. Any questions regarding those? All those in favor? Okay, this is gonna be a quick meeting. Moving on to number eight, we're gonna take a moment for silent reflection. I can have everybody stand. Thank you. Moving on to number nine, the council roundtable announcements. And we'll start with councillor Clark.
I have nothing at this time.
Councillor Hyatt.
Nothing to share, thank you.
Councillor Patel.
Same, nothing at this time.
Well. The mayor in his absence has sent me his list. So a few items that he wanted me to bring forward. The mayor attended the Lampton County Chamber of Commerce breakfast with MPP Bailey and the energy minister. Said that it was a very well organized event. He attended Roma along with myself, councillor Clark and councillor Patel in Toronto. And it was a very good, very good conference. They didn't whisper about an election, but everybody was expecting it, so. The mayor also attended the Lampton Federation of Agriculture's annual general meeting in Wyoming at the fairgrounds and brought greetings from the town. He took part in the Lampton County Chamber of Commerce 120th anniversary on Friday, the 31st, and brought greetings on behalf of the town. I attended county council in the mayor's absence. And I think that's pretty much it. Gonna move on to number 10, correspondence. I see that we have five items. Moved by councillor Clark to receive and file. Seconded by councillor Patel. And we might pull one of those out.
I just have a question. Topic C. I guess about the economic development. Was that like a solicited letter or was that just a general letter that was sent out to all municipalities?
Sure, that was a letter that was sent to all mayors of municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor receiving file? That's clear. Correspondence for consideration and motion. A letter from Gord Perry with the standardizing of trail signage. Can I get a mover? Second or what would you like to do with it?
Well, I would like to ask our trails committee member what his thoughts are on it, honestly.
Okay, thank you. So again, this was presented to the trails committee in the fall of 2024. I think from the trails committee's perspective, all of the trails that we have kind of in Bridgeview are already have our own signs that have been put in place. We're not currently planning any other trails. Maybe the rest of the stuff is like, kind of like pathways or walkways is not really specifically anything else related to trails. And I think from the trails committee's perspective, we would moving forward, if we're going to put a trail and we could consider this, but from the trails we have now, we would just stick with our existing signage. So our recommendation would be we're just receiving file.
Yeah, yep. All those in favor of that? It's moved. Number 12, delegations and presentations, I believe we have two.
We do. Just the first delegation, unfortunately, Ms. Maderos isn't able to be with us this evening. So she's asked that if we read as she has submitted and then make a recommendation from that or anything that I can provide her back.
Okay.
It should, all the council should have.
Okay.
I believe it should be there.
Everyone can access the letter. So this is for everyone else, this is a letter from the caregivers of the Petroya Feral Guts, talking about their organization and giving us some statistics. We have any thoughts or questions?
Oh, I mean, we've kind of set a precedence. We have a deadline for these kinds of things. And this is unfortunately, one of those items that's kind of missed the deadline. I think they do a good work, but you know, if we if we go down that road, then we have to entertain every request. And you know, that's why we set a deadline in the first place.
Any other thoughts or comments? It's nice to actually see some of the statistics along with it, so. I guess do we receive and file?
Oh, we have a mover for that. So that's councillor Clark.
Yeah.
Do need a second.
And a second or councillor Hyatt. Questions? All those in favor? That's moved. And our second presentation is from the YMCA, Wade. I think I have my, oh, yeah, she's on it.
Just have to swap real quick here.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you for having me here this evening, council, town of Petroya employees, members of the public. You know, I come here every year to do a presentation regarding kind of a recap of the previous year. So thank you for inviting me back for 2024 recap. So you know, something that we're proud to say as well as we've had a strong partnership for the last seven years with the town. We'd like to say it's as strong as ever. You know, we work very closely with Julie and Rick on a lot of different just initiatives and conversations and different things around the branch. So we're, you know, we have a very strong partnership and we're very pleased with where it's at and continuing on. So next slide, please. Just to go into summary of what I'll discuss tonight, just kind of a little bit of all of the kind of departments within the branch. So as you can see, memberships, our community starts here as we are a charity. Aquatics, the swim passes, we talked about a lot last year. I'll touch base on that briefly. Our fitness, child and youth and day camps, community connections, and then a brief outlook into 2025. So next slide, please. So in terms of membership breakdown, we saw an average of about 1,400 members a week or swipes a week, we'll say, coming through. That breaks down to about 5,900 a month, which is up from 2023, which was 5,800. It may seem minimal, but it does mean that people are coming more. So we like to see that. You will notice that the year end counts at the end of last year, 1150 was a little lower than we had anticipated. However, we're very pleased to say that as of the start of February and even today, we are back over 1,300, which is right in line with where we anticipate anticipated to be. And we're still continuing to see more memberships coming in than going out day by day. So we're pleased with that as well. On the last piece there, financial assistance, we ended 2023 at 15% of our membership being supported by financial assistance. That number is up to 17%. And as of this morning, it was up to 18%. So that's something that we're, we're proud of. We're very pleased to be continuing on and offering that financial assistance because we know that it means that there's more people utilizing it that maybe wouldn't have it the full cost. So and then a quick thing at the bottom as well, just the breakdown of our memberships very generally. So we have about 500 everything members, which is what grants access to the full building. Our enhanced memberships tend to lean more towards fitness classes. And then our essentials are utilizing just the fitness center and gymnasium. So as you can see, those kind of fill most of our membership bracket there. Next slide, please. As I stated, we're not just a nonprofit, we are a charity. We receive donations annually, United Way, local donors such as the town of Petroya Town Council. We receive a very nice $5,000 donation each year from you, and that's going directly back to Petroya and surrounding area and making sure that financial assistance is being given back to the community there to utilize our facility. So last year, we provided $42,000 in financial assistance. I believe that was right on par with the year before as well, maybe just a touch higher. I don't have that number, but we're already projecting 15% to have more contributions this year as well. Something else we do each year as a fundraiser is our Fill the Bus campaign. So we raised over $4,500 last year, 2023, we're only 4,000. So again, we're, we're seeing those donations come in and we're already working on some different strategies for this year to try and increase that number even more. With that, we were able to send 23 kids to camp last year, which is again directly for kids coming to our Petroya camp. Anyone that donates within Petroya, the money stays in Petroya and goes right back to the kids. So you know, it's staying within the community, which again, is something we're really proud of on that. Next slide, please. In terms of breakdown for our first apartment fitness, it's doing really, really well. Brenda Wilson is our fitness supervisor. She's been there for five years and she's really built a great department. We're seeing classes filled left, right and center within our fitness classes. We're seeing an average of about eight people a class, our cycle class, we don't have enough cycles with 12 pikes. So you know, we're seeing them really do well. We've, we got a couple new yoga instructors at the start of 2024. We've added, I think, three classes and they're all getting filled. We had a pop up class. We announced that I think on Friday afternoon for a Monday class, we had 10 people show up on Monday. So we're really seeing those fitness classes be filled. So it's a really good sign for, for the sustainability of the fitness classes. Something else that we were lucky enough to be a part of this year, we have what's called a Why Thrive program. Essentially, it's a, it's a personal training on a piece of paper. We take you through a workout and from then on, you can do the workout on your own following a piece of paper. Well, there's, they're reworking it nationwide and we were chosen as one of the pilot sites. So we actually got about 20 new Why Thrive participants out of that. Brenda played a big part in making, putting that into effect. So we were a successful pilot. So now it's going to be launched across our association and across other associations in Canada. So we're really pleased to be a pilot on that and see the success that it brought as well. Pickleball was another big success for our fitness as well. I know it's been a hot topic here, I'm sure with the backyard project and yeah, it's, we added a couple pickleball classes this year and they sold out within 24 hours. We just opened one up on Friday and it sold out by the end of the day for a new one in February. So those are some more classes as well that we're introducing and they're flourishing as well. We have a volunteer that runs that program. So you know, again, community giving back to community on that, which we're pleased with. So next slide, please. Our child and youth and day camp, we've had some turnover at the top of that department. There was a mat leave and then someone had to leave due to health reasons. Finally have some stability in the role, which is great to see. And the department is really stabilized now, which is great to see, as I said. Camp last year, we saw 280 campers out of 280 camper spots, nice and full, inclusion campers. We had 18 spots filled all 18. So we had a sold out camp. This year we are expanding. We're adding another group of eight. So we're hoping that we can continue to push. And obviously we hope that with the expansion of the backyard project there with the soccer fields splash pad, that we can maybe utilize that green space in the future to expand our camps even further. So school year camps, we're at about 90%. That's our P8As, March breaks and Christmas break. And then our child and youth classes as a whole, just from 23 to 24, we really saw the numbers come back in 23. We, we were struggling to fill some of our classes and we had to shut some down earlier than anticipated. Last year, we saw a massive increase. We were able to run all of our programs as we anticipated. This year, we're continuing that even more. So it's good to see the program is taking off and the parents are coming to our center with their kids and using our programming again. Parents' night out was an addition we did last year. Now we offer it every month and we're getting 15 kids a night for that. So you know, they come, they have a bite to eat, play in the gym, go for a swim and the parents get three hours of bliss. So it's, it's been very well received in the community. So and then lastly, we do have our leadership courses, our babysitter home alone. We only ran a couple of classes in 23 as things were getting going. We ran a few more last year. So just again, empowering those youth in our community to try and give them the tools they need to kind of get those first jobs and gain those responsibilities. So next slide, please. Aquatics. So I know there was lots of discussion last year about it. We're seeing a great success in our aquatics program right now. We had over 2,000 swim lesson participants last year. I gotta look at my sheet for my notes with some of these, but we had our non-member lessons, which was something that was discussed last year as well. So in the fall, we saw 30 non-member swim lesson registrants, which may sound, I'm not sure how you receive that number, but for comparison, JMFC and Sarnia also began to offer them and they had 40 with about 300 more lesson spot spots. So when you look at the ratio of things, I think we did pretty good at promoting it within. So we're pleased to see that the community accepted that. Aqua dance is one that's up there that is, I'll highlight as it's something that we introduced and we created. Basically a high energy aquafit with a lot more splashing and upbeat music. And it's something that again, we've created and it's actually gaining recognition in the association as something that they want to look to implement. So we're very proud of our, our lifeguard Bree, who came up with that and put it into action. And you know, it's something that we're, we're kind of the owners of and creators of. So we're hoping that catches on. Sponsored swims, very well attended last year. You know, town of Petroya 150 was obviously, that moves, was well attended. We averaged about 65 swimmers for each open swim throughout the year, seeing as our normal rec swims are about 30. It was, it basically doubled that. So we're really happy to see that. We had sponsored swims as well with Kuanis, with LCDS. I think I had, there was one, a real estate agent had sponsored one as well. So it's something that we're always working on getting and because we know the free swims really goes a long way in the community. So and lastly, we hosted a swim meet for the first time, I think, as the Y. I know they used to run it, I think, at the center a few times before, but it was our first time running it. Great success is something we're going to look to host again in the future. I think there was over 100 swimmers that attended. So we're quite pleased to have that ability to host. So next slide, please. The swim passes. So these numbers, I think I took as February 1st. So to date, we had sold 37 total passes. 33 of those 37 had been redeemed at the Y and then total usage you'll see is 113 swipes, which if you do the math is slightly less than 50%. But the way that I tend to view that is it's a positive as the community members wanted to be able to swim when they wanted. So the fact that that number isn't 300 means that people are saying, I don't feel like swimming right now. I can come once a month. So I think the swim passes are doing as they intended and allowing people to swim at free rein without having the commitment of the membership. So I do think it's been a positive. I know we've had a few, a lot of the seniors specifically. I think 50% of the passes sold have been from seniors and a few of those have been multi-time buyers. We've had one woman, she's purchased four. So she's definitely utilizing it and really enjoying the pass. So again, I'm viewing it as a success and I look forward to continuing the pilot into this year as well. So let me go next slide, please. In terms of community connections, I can kind of let you read through that, but as you can see, we're involved in quite a few things. As I'm looking at it now, I forgot to write down the Yak event on that that we hosted last year as well and will be hosting again this year. So we host a lot of different, different events, a lot of partnerships throughout the town. We're constantly working on new ones. You know, third party memberships as well are, are great because it's just that commitment with the community and saying, hey, you're giving something back to the community. Let's let your members come at a reduced rate is kind of how that, those partnerships tend to work. So we're really, really happy that we have those connections and we're constantly building those connections. You know, just to name a few, we have LCDS, Community Living, Optimist Rotary, those are just a few that have partnered with us to give their, their members and clientele reduced rates so that they can come and use it. We're working on new ones, like I said, all the time. And you know, if anyone's got a business and is interested, come see me and we can try to work something out. So yeah, and with that, we can go to the thank you slide and I'll just finish with a quick 2025 outlook. So one of the things that we are very pleased to be able to, that we'll be offering soon. Once she gets her official paperwork back is first aid courses. Candice, our aquatic supervisor recently completed successfully the course for standard first aid instruction. So that's going to be a way that we can hopefully give back to the community and start offering those courses. I know it's not something that I have normally seen offered in, in the area. So being able to offer that at the Y is going to be a big benefit to a lot of businesses and community people, community members through town. So we're really excited on that. She's also getting her swim lesson instructors training to be able to train future instructors. So again, just kind of developing the next era of lifeguards and instructors as well in the town. Recently had our first YMCA advisory committee meeting the other night. So we had seven members of the YMCA from all different demographics come and speak with myself. Julie was present as well, and it's just a way that we're, we're trying to get a better idea of, you know, what are the members hearing? What are they, what are they looking for from us? What, you know, what can we propose to them and what's their feedback? So it's, it's really going to help dictate kind of some of our decisions as we move forward. And we think it's going to be really beneficial. So we plan to meet quarterly, which is enough time, we hope for them to make observations and come back to us. And again, kind of help pave the way for the sustainable future of the Y. So quick update as well, we will be getting new fitness equipment coming in soon. The order has been signed. It's just a matter of when it arrives. So we know that it's all part of updating the fitness center so we can offer, you know, a high class product in our wellness center. I know the treadmills last year were very well received. And so this is kind of the next step as we continue each year, just kind of adding and replacing and upgrading. And it'll again, it'll just keep the YMCA as up to date as we can. Backyard project, again, just a quick mention, it's looking very good back there. Julie's been great at communicating with us on all those projects. And we're really excited to see where that goes. So with that, thank you very much for listening. I know everyone else has been talking fast, so I hope I kept up the pace. And yeah, I look forward to coming back again next year. So.
Well, thank you very much for, for coming. If I just open it up to council, if anyone has any questions or comments. Just a couple of observations, I, I really appreciate the community partners that you're talking about. We have great service clubs and organizations and partnerships, and it's nice to see that they're, they're partnering with you at the Y. The backyard, I'm very excited that you mentioned several times. Really looking forward to it not just being mud back there, but maybe some grass and you know, and I think it would just enhance everything back there. So appreciate your time and thank you very much for, for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks. Moving on to number 13, community announcements, recognitions and awards. And we have our community announcements, like kind of a move by councillor Hyatt, seconded by councillor Clark. Any questions regarding anything on there? Pretty straightforward. All those in favor? And that passes? I guess I could have you read all these things, but.
You're okay?
We're doing okay. Moving on to first opportunity for the public to address council. We have nobody jumping up and running towards the mic. And there is a second opportunity. So moving on to number 15, reports requiring a motion. We have one for administration, report from Trevor Benjamin, senior planner regarding the application for draft plan of subdivision approval. And moved by councillor Clark and seconded by councillor Patel. And
Absolutely.
Maybe you can read that and then we can.
Absolutely. That is for the council of the town of Petroya to support and endorse the proposed draft plan of subdivision and forward correspondence to the subdivision approval authority at the corporation of the county of Lampton, subject to any required conditions of approval. And that the report prepared by Trevor Benjamin, senior planner regarding the country of U states based on draft plan of subdivision application be received for information.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you. To Mr. Benjamin, can you just walk us through the process of what will happen next after? Like if we approve this, what happens next in terms of the process?
Yes, certainly. So after, once if council does support and endorse the draft plan, that corresponds will be sent to the subdivision approval authority. I'll then have a meeting with the subdivision approval and we'll finalize the conditions. The draft conditions are included at the end of my report. And then once approved, there'll be a notice of decision issued on the, on the subdivision. Following notice of decision, the applicant will work towards completing those conditions and staff will start preparation of a subdivision agreement that will be, is one of the conditions that is required to be fulfilled.
And the subdivision agreement will come back before council to by law.
Any other questions? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Moving on to B, finance, we have report from Jayla Saunders, financial, financial analyst for successful grant application for the fire protection. Over in a second or councillor Hyatt, councillor Clark.
And that is for council of the town of Petroya to receive and file the report of Jayla Saunders, financial analyst. Thanks. Now you have me saying it. Analyst, senior tax administrator dated this 10th day of February, 2025, regarding the fire protection grant and that by law, six of 2024 before council this evening be endorsed.
Any comments or questions or chief cousins, do you have anything to add?
No, not at this time.
So this is great. This, it's nice to see, you know, it's a smaller grant, but it's, it's a very helpful one. All those in favor? Not passes. Moving on to C, fire emergency management, we have a report from fire chief Rick Cousins. Right, I jumped ahead. It doesn't say fire chief. Report of Rick Cousins, director of public safety, fire chief regarding the fourth quarter report. Over in a second or councillor Hyatt, councillor Patel. And I'll let you read that.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive and file, order the director of public safety and fire chief dated this 10th day of February, 2025, regarding the fourth quarter of 2024.
Comments, questions? No, not this time. Excellent. It was a busy quarter for you. It was and a lot of hours put in. All those in favor? And that's moving on to D, operations, a report from Mike Thompson, director of operations regarding 2025 sidewalk replacement and R1 and R2 tendering process. And a mover, a sec, councillor Hyatt, councillor Clark.
And that is for the council of the town of Petroya to receive the report of the director of operations dated February 10th, 2025. regarding the two thousand twenty five sidewalk replacement and R one, R two engineering works and that the two thousand twenty five sidewalk replacement and R one, R two engineering works be approved in the amount of one hundred and one thousand nine hundred dollars plus HST.
Questions? Councillor Hyatt.
Just uh, sorry through you. Uh, just a question on the price estimates. Are they using current data or the data from like their two thousand and twenty two sidewalks? Do you know?
Uh, current data.
Current data, okay. And if the engineering is done now, but the project costs come back significantly higher, will the engineering work be able to be reused in twenty twenty six? They wouldn't have to re-engineer it?
Um, yeah, if 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 the project costs come back higher than budgeted, I would, I would think that I would ask council for additional funds as I did last year with the Maple Street, Garfield Street and the little path that went back to Samway. I had to come back to council and ask for an additional twenty some odd thousand dollars. So um, I think um, well, wishful thinking that hopefully it can be under budget as as uh, BM Ross suggests in the report. So um, we'll see what happens. Councillor Patel, oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Hyatt, do you have a? Oh, go ahead.
So through you. So the projected projects and sidewalks that are allocated under this budget, is there any um, differences or variations to the work that's scoped out than we originally thought of?
No, it's um, everything that is in this proposal um, was talked about at budget time. Um, at that time during budget, it was suggested that third and uh, fifth street sidewalks be looked at and um, which is included in this estimate.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hyatt.
I guess most of my last one was on on Fourth Street, we've got a sidewalk all the way down the east. I don't think we finalized on whatever potential development might come down towards the south. So I'm just wondering if the intersection of fourth and sixth, we should could can should consider moving the sidewalk to the west side to prevent having to cross five additional, maybe six additional driveways. I don't know how that all depends and how that new subdivision would potentially come in place, but if there would be any I think you're gonna have to cross the road regardless if it would save any money, then potentially it could be a an option.
Yes, we can look into that. That would um, that would make sense to go on a side yard rather than the uh, front yards of those five houses. Um, as you were asking that question, councillor Hyatt, I'm not sure if there's a transformer there beside that house in the picture. Looks like something's there. So I don't know if that might limit that sidewalk um, to the side yard of that house or not, but um, yes, we will explore that for sure.
If. Good. Uh, through you to Mr. Thompson, if there, if we're unclear, should we consider stopping it at Sixth Street for now? And then, I mean, there's only what, four houses south of Sixth Street? And then continuing it once we continue into the subdivision, or should we just do it while we have the equipment in the?
Um, yeah, I think I think it'd be best to continue on to the the south limit of that road. Um, I don't think we have a concrete plan from Petrolia Sky as to what exactly is going to to go on in their in their subdivision, where the sidewalk is going to be. Um, I could consult with Mr. Benjamin's on that to see if we could try to find uh, the latest drawing. Um, but um, I'll discuss that with the engineer BM Ross and see what he thinks about that. But that's a good suggestion, but I'm thinking probably be best to get down there and ready for them to take off. But um, yeah, I'll 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 explore going to the side yard and and maybe potentially stopping it there and and seeing what happens in that first phase or last phase of Petrolia Sky. I think Petrolia Sky is going to go from the south to the north. Um, but yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, good. So um, all those in favor? And that's moved. Um, moving on to E, Parks and Recreation and Facilities. Um, we have a report from Julie Bullock, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities regarding the RFQ results for the Bank of Nova Scotia renovations. Mover and a seconder, councillor Clark, councillor Hyatt.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt the report of the Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities dated February tenth, two thousand twenty five regarding RFQ results for the Bank of Nova Scotia renovations and that council approved the award of the job to Burke renovations in the amount of thirty eight thousand, seven hundred fifty five dollars plus HST.
Questions? Councillor Hyatt.
Uh, in the reports to council, could we, in the section where it says approve within budget and amount, could we add what the what the approved budget value was for a comparison point? Is that possible to do or not possible to do?
Uh, definitely.
That's.
Yeah, I believe it was fifty?
It was fifty, yeah. Sometimes I don't carry my budget book, so.
I always keep mine under my pillow.
That would be great. Thank you.
To my.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Um, we all have another report from Julie Bullock, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities regarding Victoria Hall Elevator modernization. And a mover and a seconder, councillor Clark, councillor Patel.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt the report of the Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities dated February tenth, two thousand twenty five regarding elevator modernization at Victoria Hall and that council approved the award of the worked TK elevator in the amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred dollars plus HST exclude excluding the option for Max Link Voice Cellphone Line.
Okay. Um, questions? Councillor Hyatt.
Uh, so this is obviously not budgeted for in this year's this year's budget. Uh, there is a line item in the CapEx plan that's fifty K for Victoria Hall. I don't know what that specifically is used for, or would that be considered to use for this project? Or?
Uh, yeah, it could be partially to, uh, yeah.
Offset some.
There's a, it's a big building, complicated building. It's a lot of one foreseeing stuff that happens such as the elevator.
Next. Councillor Hyatt.
Next question. I know that for some projects in Victoria Hall, we do a cost share with the VPP. Is this a project that would fall under that uh, arrangement or no?
Um, three year worship. Should. And that um, it's it serves the VPP as well. Yeah.
I have one more if no one else has one on. Uh, I guess my last question is just related to the contract. In the contract, there's the elevator company has put in a lot of clauses related to cost inflations or, you know, tariffs and taxes, uh, escalations, et cetera, but there's not really much protection for them, the town's perspective. Like, there's already a contingency built in, maybe a ten percent contingency or ten thousand dollar contingency, just a concern with, you know, say the contingency or this actually escalation was twenty five percent or thirty percent. There's not really an option for the town to get out of the contract. Um, I don't know how that's typically handled or uh, what we would do in that situation if the escalation was significantly higher than what we're expecting.
Do you, which one do you want to take this?
Now, and uh, Julie did uh, connect with the the company. Not clause, um, because I've been reading through, we saw we saw that clause about that. But that they, I don't know how long that person's been with the company, but she's never seen it. Um, had them have to use the cost escalation factor. However, we're living in um, unusual times and who knows? I don't, the things probably made in the states, I don't have no idea, but. But we asked about changing, putting a clause in there, but uh, that would, that's their standard contract. So it would take a lot of effort and probably legal cost time to get something changed like that.
Maybe we could just do like a follow up. Like it says, this is not scheduled till like January of twenty twenty six, so maybe we could do a touch base after, you know, six months to see if we're expecting any inflation error.
Definitely, yeah.
And at least be prepared.
Yeah, so we've actually been in discussions with them. There's a a couple of different options. We can actually have them start building the equipment as as soon as possible, and then we can store it. Or they could just wait and not put the order in at the factory until closer to kind of so that it arrives in November or December for the January replacement. Um, we actually have been leaning more on the side of let's get it built as soon as possible. We'll store it. Um, just so that the equipment is here and hopefully that helps with any any cost pressures that might come down the line.
Yeah, their big advantage by storing it before January is that if it does break during the season, then we can get it fixed faster. Yeah, I forgot how many weeks they said to fix it. It's multiple weeks.
So the work itself will take four weeks.
Four weeks.
Um, yeah, but the production of all the uh, parts is like twelve to sixteen weeks. So.
Councillor Patel.
So through you, so part of uh, my question was, you already answered, what do we do in the interim if this isn't scheduled till January? Um, and if it is the timeframe, why is it not till January? The scope of the work, if they can have the parts and be able to install in a shorter window?
Yeah, so basically because we're going to have to shut down the whole elevator for four weeks for them to do the modernization, we don't want to put that anywhere near the theater season. Um, and they're really, if something drastic were to happen, we might be able to get it between the last of the October show and before the Christmas shows, but ideally, we want to wait until the the building is empty for the month of January. Um, but again, if something were to happen, if we had the parts here, then we could potentially make that that happen earlier. But the reason for January is just so that we're not interrupting the whole theater season. We also need to figure out because that is how we are an accessible building, that elevator. Um, so in the meantime, even for January, the municipal office will have to find a a solution to remain accessible to to people who want to come and visit us. So.
Yep. Council.
One more question. So in previous conversations over the last couple of things that I've been on council, we've talked about the need to replace um, or put in a new elevator with this modernization, how much time will that give us? I mean, no crystal ball, I'm sure, but what does that look like? Or do they have any predictions on what that would look like for the?
So I think this modernization will basically take the elevator back up to being a another twenty to twenty five years of of service. Just like it, basically, it's almost a brand new elevator. Um, just the interior like decor won't be changed, but as far as all the working parts, that'll all be the same. Um, but the new elevator was regarding a different project.
Yeah, correct, which is going to go to the balcony.
Yeah, exactly.
An extension.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So is it? So we're in agreement that you're going to have it built? Is that?
Yeah, I think that's my plan is that we'll have it built as soon as possible. Yeah.
I think that's sounds good. Okay. Any other questions? I've got the answer to. All those in favor? Um, moving on to F, uh, water and wastewater, report from Mike Thompson, Director of Operations regarding Brights Grove Water Treatment Plant intake replacement and update number one. And may I get a mover and a seconder, councillor Clark, councillor Hyatt?
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Operations dated February tenth, two thousand and twenty five regarding the Brights Grove Water Treatment Plant intake replacement update number.
Thank you. Questions? Councillor Hyatt? No?
Not. Sorry, thank you.
Um, all those in favor? Great. Um, moving to number sixteen, second opportunity for the public to address council. And then we'll move on to seventeen. Uh, new and unfinished business. Uh, we have two notices of motion. Um, and uh, the first one is uh, from councillor Hyatt regarding allocation of provincial funding for the OPP. And
I'll move it.
You will move that. And councillor Clark will second that to let the.
And that is where in rush respect of the OPP offset funding for the province and the lack of a formal notification of the exact funding amount for the two thousand twenty five budget deliberations. Now therefore be it resolved that the council, the corporation of the town of Petrolia allocate one percent of the two thousand twenty five municipal tax levy equal to sixty six thousand dollars to a new tax reduction reserve to be applied for two thousand twenty six budget deliberations and that the target twenty twenty six tax levy increase be less than two percent to the three percent target in the two thousand twenty five budget presentation and the sixty six thousand dollars shall be taken from the OPP offset funding for the province of Ontario.
Councillor.
Question, um, support the idea, obviously, if uh, we can't, we can't now promise that it's going to be three percent, understanding hopefully that everyone understands that the target. Um, my question is uh, probably for Mr. Charlebois. Is this something that we can make happen relatively simply? And as the treasurer and not the CAO, what is your thoughts on this?
I think through you, there uh, there were just two points I'd like to add. First one is that they didn't actually give us any money. That was one of the two main options. What they did is they actually reduced or they sent us a new invoice. It's a lower number on it. So we can still do what councillor Hyatt has suggested, but it would be basically coming sixty six thousand dollars coming out of our working capital reserve to go into a this new um, tax reduction reserve. Um, and we can do that, just a bit more accounting and whatever. The um, other important point to keep in mind is the province reduced our bill in twenty twenty five. Hopefully, we do sit in twenty twenty six going forward. Uh, they didn't say that yet. So we might be back exactly where we were when we did our budget discussions uh, last November. But actually, it's going to be a little worse because they'll have now the cost of twenty twenty five in there. Uh, which hasn't been like, was the salary cost increased for OPP? That hasn't been fully implemented yet from their side yet. But we can definitely, if council wants this, we can definitely set it up.
Yeah, so with our twenty twenty five budget, the part of the three percent increase was geared towards the anticipated policing costs that we were expecting to be two hundred and twenty thousand more than anticipated. And so where does that tax revenue that we're collecting now go? If we got a lower bill on the policing, so what? The difference in the money as uh, councillor Hyatt is suggesting, you know, let's say it's sixty five thousand. Where does that sixty five thousand that we were collecting this year, where does it end up at the end of this year?
Go ahead.
Well, at the end of this year, it would end up in the uh, surplus for twenty twenty six. And since we don't know the surplus until March or April of the following year, we can include it in the budget. So that's why by bringing it forward at this point, we're already accounting for the surplus from next year. So the surplus may be lower, but at least we're we're allocating it to this operating cost. So that's the intent.
So that's why you're moving it out of working capital for now.
There's no.
Until it, yeah, okay.
Yeah, because we didn't, we just got a lower bill, which is a good thing.
But that's the way it was playing out up here. I just wanted to make sure.
Is it so you're?
Yes.
Good, okay. Any other?
No, I don't have any other information to share.
Um, so it, we're able to create this, it's, we're going to use the word operations on it, not capital. That's the buzz. Yep. Um, yeah, okay. Councillor Patel, any question? You're you're good?
Oh, great.
Okay.
I think it's worth mentioning that. I think it's worth mentioning that, you know, Mr. Charlebois and his group have done a great job every year with, uh, you know, putting together the budget and, and keeping the tax increases, uh, as low as possible. But I think, you know, I think Councillor Hyatt's idea has some merit.
All right, so just wanted to confirm, so you want the word operating in there somewhere? Supposed to just tax reduction reserve, tax reduction for operating?
You don't want it to be applied against a capital.
You do not want it to be applied against capital.
Actually, it's about operating tax reduction reserve. A sound, and, and it'll come up when we do our twenty twenty six budget. That'd be one of the things what council will talk about.
All those in favor? And just for, oh, my, too. Thank you. Um, second motion, um, was from, uh, Councillor Welsh and I believe, uh, Councillor Clark said that he would take that. Um, so he moves to lift it and do I have a secondary? Councillor Hyatt?
And whereas a handful of residents who historically have received waste collection were excluded from the new bin system to the bulk of their property lying within Enniskillen Township. Whereas these properties front of Municipal Property Street, a petroleum municipal street. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Petrolia directs staff to work with waste management to determine an appropriate cost and provide bins so that these addresses may continue to receive waste collection in Petrolia.
Okay. Questions?
Well, I just, I think it's just worth mentioning that we've been collecting this for twenty plus years or more and that I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't continue to do so. I mean, these property owners, they're all paying taxes in Petrolia. I realize their properties are divided into two municipalities, but it's a service that we've provided, you know, for as long as I have known and I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't continue it.
Councillor Hyatt?
I was just wondering if we got a definition of handful? Like how many noses are we actually considering in this project?
So that it would be four and they would be individual agreements, so it's not mandatory that they have to have this happen. Uh, it's, it would be an option, so we would reach out to those four houses. We would ask them, the current property owners, if they would wish to, and then from there it would be an agreement that remains with the property.
Councillor?
Uh, just wanted to add through you that, uh, I fully support the idea of continuing to do this by no fault of their own, um, of this policy overlap and I think that we should continue. We're on the street. I, I just think it's something we should do, hundred percent agreement.
This was a counselor.
So, so those, those four residents actually pay their residential taxes to Enniskillen. Which their residents with taxes to Enniskillen do not include garbage collection or recycling collection. They do pay taxes to the Town of Petrolia. It's very small, mind you, and obviously for that amount, um, that's why.
They're being expensive.
Or I said, no, that, you know, you don't get a garbage cart and a recycling cart, so just so we're clear on that. So the only, the, the only problem is that I can see is that, um, I have been saying no to residents in the Town of Petrolia that pay taxes to Town of Petrolia and get curbside collection. I've had multiple people ask for additional carts and I said no, so I just worry that potentially this might some issues. I'm clear, so you want me or us to get a price from waste management to pick up recycling and garbage at these four houses? And then we will build them individually and have an agreement with them? Mandy, is that correct?
That's correct.
Will this agreement come as a bylaw?
It, it, it will need to and then it'll be something that also indicates that it's applied to their taxes annually and, and it lives with the home.
And if.
Title registered on title, correct?
Yes.
And if someone moves, they can opt in or opt out of it?
I don't believe so. Once we start collecting, it maintains with the home. It's, it's, it used to be called a taxable benefit, or I'm sorry, a, um, L I T, North Street had them for the longest time. So it'll be similar to that kind of an agreement.
Okay. Anyone okay with that?
And the report, our report would come back with the costs, the council, Mandy, do you envision that? We reach out to the, the homeowners and.
Through, through your worship, if this, this directive would give us that, we would be reaching out and moving forward.
Side at that time if they want to.
Correct.
And waste management has the ability to break that down?
Uh, yes, I had, I, I gave them a heads up that this potentially with them last week and, and, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll gauge them in some conversations as to what the price would be for a weekly pickup recycling and garbage for each resident and build them appropriately.
No, and just, uh, a comment to, to yours, um, you were directing um, what we told you to do. It's, it's, this is not, you know, to undermine that. I think this is something that historically we have done. And if there, there is, um, it's very specific that these homeowners, half their property is Petrolia, half their property. Yes, they definitely pay residential for Enniskillen. Um, I don't think we're gonna find another four of these anywhere else that are going to have the same, um, mix, so.
I think it is to, to, uh, Director Thompson's point, it's that the property taxes paid by those residents to Enniskillen are on vacant property lands, so under seventy dollars a year to Petrolia, so under seventy dollars per year are paid by those residents as far as Petrolia taxes.
And that's why we're looking at getting the cost, so. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? That passes. Moving on to number eighteen, consideration of bylaws. Uh, can I have, uh, mover and a second to read first and second time, Councillor Clark, Councillor Hyatt?
And that is for bylaw number six and seven of two thousand twenty five to be read a first and second time.
Okay, all those in favor? Passes and, uh, third and final time. Moved by Councillor Hyatt, second by Councillor Clark.
And that is for bylaw number zero six of two thousand twenty five. Being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia to authorize the execution of an agreement with His Majesty the King and the Rite of Ontario as represented by the Ministry of the Solicitor General, Office of the Fire Marshal for the purpose of receiving funds under the fire protection two thousand twenty five grant to support the installation of diesel exhaust, of a diesel exhaust system at the Petrolia North Enniskillen Fire Hall, be read a third time and finally passed. And that bylaw number seven of two thousand and twenty five, being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia to confirm the resolutions and motions of the Council of the Town of Petrolia, which were adopted up to and including February tenth, two thousand twenty five, be read a third time and finally passed.
Great, thank you. Any questions? All those in favor? Passes. And number nineteen, Chairman, Councillor Clark. Councillor Hyatt, I can't, my hand up, all those in favor? And that passes.
Meeting is on Monday, February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five.
Great, thank you everyone for attending.